For cell phones, please. Time being six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Joe.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here. And we have a quorum, so we will move on to item number three. Does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not.
No.
I do not. Item number four is approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the agenda as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. At this time, would any person care to make a public comment?
I would.
Yep, so there is none in the room, so ma'am, you have the floor. Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Tamara Lee. I was at a meeting here a few weeks ago, so you may remember me. I am the attorney for the town of Volin and the town of Gayville. And I am just curious, I am wondering what the status is with regard to the ordinance that the county is working on with regard to the medical marijuana issue. And I ask that just because the two towns I am the attorney for are obviously in Yankton County. And I'm kind of wondering if how you're drafting this ordinance is going to be inclusive of the local towns, or if your expectation is that they will draft up their own ordinances to deal with issues with initiated Measure 26 and Amendment A.
Okay, so we have been advised by attorneys that we cannot respond to any request during public comment because it's not on the agenda. But what we can do is during commissioner updates, we can make comment during that time.
Okay, and I'm not asking for any action or anything, I was just asking for some clarification on it.
So at this time, we have made no effort to do any ordinance whatsoever. We have nothing written down, we have had no commissioner meetings to discuss a direction.
Tamara, this is Commissioner Clemish. Commissioner Fox and I have been appointed to kind of lead this effort. If you'd like to get ahold of us, we can speak with you offline on this, if that'd be helpful. I can give you my email, or you can call the auditor's office and get my number.
Yeah, that would be great, I appreciate that. If you have an email or a phone number, you can give me right now, I would appreciate that.
My email is dank, D-A-N-K, at co.yankin.us.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Would anyone else care to make a public comment? All right, public comment is closed. Item number five is approval of the April 5, 2021 minutes.
I'd move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the minutes for April 5, 2021. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. So item number six, we will take claims first. Are there any questions on the claims? I would entertain a motion to approve the claims as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve the claims. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Next, we have the auditor treasurer report and pool cash reports.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the auditor treasurer report and pool cash report, and I did have one question. Trying to think which one it is. It's the auditor treasurer report, it's a new format, and I believe we are missing some figures at the bottom. Yep, so the general fund and special fund and trust and agency funds are missing, and the total should be the 11 million. So does anyone want me to read those off here, Patty? I'll read those off. So the general fund at the bottom of that report should be $6,317,954.12. The special fund is $2,980,593.93. And the trust and agency funds, $2,482,910.15. So the grand total general ledger will balance with the cash above at $11,781,458.20. So I just wanted to make that clarification in your packets. The document presented was missing a few figures. That being said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Both reports are approved. We now have mental illness quarterly reports.
Move approval. Clemish.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to approve the mental illness quarterly reports. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. And we have some unanticipated grant revenue.
These are emergency management in the amount of $1,906.35. And the sheriff, $434. I need a motion for each one.
I'm not here, I don't never question money coming in, but what are these for exactly, do we know?
The sheriff is for their vests.
Okay.
And, do you know the one?
The Avera one is the pod reimbursement. So if you noticed on the claims, we had pod expenses, which technically were not the responsibility of the county, so we are being reimbursed for those.
Move approval.
Well, we need two motions, so which one are you motioning to approve?
Approval of Avera Sacred Heart Health Unanticipated Revenue in the Amount of $1,906.35 for pod reimbursement.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to approve the unanticipated revenue from Avera. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.
Move approval of the grant for vests for the sheriff department in the amount of $434.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to approve the unanticipated grant revenue for the sheriff's office. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. So that concludes item number six. Item number seven, Legislative Audit Report. Is Mariah here?
Hi.
Oh, there we go, Maria.
Yep.
Well, I got that one wrong, didn't I?
Just joined, yes, so.
All right, well, we are at item number seven, and you have the floor.
Perfect. Okay, do you guys have in front of you, it would have our letterhead on it, and the first sentence is this letter is intended to inform. Okay, what this letter is, is it's the letter of communication with governance, and pretty much what it is is just to kind of give you guys a good idea of how the audit overall went when I was working with Yankton County and Patty and other Patty and Karen. If, at the bottom of the page, under qualitative aspects of accounting practices, there were no accounting policies that were changed during the audit period noted above, that would be ending 2019. And no transactions that I noticed that were entered in by you guys during the audit period where you guys didn't pass them and approve them during your meetings. Any significant transactions were recognized also in the proper period in those financial statements. On the second page, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. I didn't have any problems getting information from Patty or Treasurer Patty or any of the other office staff that I asked. They were all really good about getting me what I asked for when I asked for it, which was always helpful. Disagreements with management, non-corrected and uncorrected misstatements. There was a list that I gave to Patty of our adjustments that we proposed to be changed to the financial statements, which she looked at and we looked over them together and approved them. So then, those are made. Management representations, that will be the second letter that I'll have you guys look at in a little bit. That has to do with your responsibilities as a board and as managers of the county. Management's consultation with other accountants. You guys have the option to consult with other accountants about any auditing or accounting questions that you have. Kind of like getting a second opinion, as far as I'm aware, you guys did not do that. So, none of those took place. And then, any other findings were not really noted, but I'll talk about those in a little bit with the management letter. So now, if you guys would take out the one with your letterhead on it, the Yankton County letterhead, or pull that up. This one. Pretty much what this does is it just kind of lays out your fulfillment and your responsibilities as a governing board during the course of the audit. I will need a signature from Patty and the chairman on this page. Number, item one, basically that just says that you guys fulfilled your responsibilities that were laid out in the terms of the engagement letter that I had you guys sign in February. You acknowledge your responsibility for the design and implementation of internal controls in order to fairly present your financial statements, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Item number three, on the second page, you acknowledge your responsibility for the design and implementation and maintenance of internal controls to detect fraud and prevent fraud. And as far as I know, I had a conversation with Patty and Treasurer Patty about it, gave a questionnaire to the chairman and didn't see any problems there that you guys informed me of. Didn't find any indication of it while I was looking at the stuff either. Item number four, acknowledge your responsibility for compliance with the laws. There weren't any major issues there, I don't believe. Number five, reviewed, approved, and taken responsibility for the financial statements and the related notes. So we actually helped pretty much every county do their notes to the financial statements, and then Patty signed off on them once I sent them back to her. Number six, you guys didn't have any related party transactions, which was good. You weren't above the $5,000 threshold with any of you guys being used for accounting purchases. Number 10, the effects of all known possible or actual litigations and claims have been accounted for and disclosed. I was in contact with the state's attorney and got a list of any litigation that you guys have pending. Not a problem there. 11 through 16 are pretty much just classification on how things are reported on the financial statements and things like that. The next page, number 18, that's just talking about basically your transfers and how those are reported, and then those were figured those out. Number 20, you guys provided me with all information that I asked for. It was really good to just be able to go in, get what I needed. If I couldn't find it, somebody would give it to me. Number 21, all transactions have been recorded in the accounting records and are reflected in the financial statements, that is also true. 22, no knowledge of fraud or suspected fraud, just talked about that already. 23 and 23, you don't have any allegations of fraud that you're aware of from anybody else. 24 through 29 are pretty much just the exact same thing I just got done saying, but in more words. So then, the last page of this letter, number 30, there were no violations or possible violations of laws or regulations, didn't run into anything there. Any restrictions that you guys made for your fund balances, those were properly disclosed and approved by you guys as a board. And then, number 31, the county has satisfactory title to all owned assets, which is also true to my knowledge. So if I could have the chairman and Patty sign that at some point, and then just shoot me an email with the attached letter, that would be greatly appreciated. The next item that I have to talk about is the next one with our letterhead on it. The first sentence is, in planning and performing our audit, that's the one we're going to connect now. Be good? Okay, now, basically, the front page just spells out the definition of the terms, which I'll talk through. If you'd please go to the next page. This is the management letter, so kind of just summarizes all the findings, which thankfully, Yankton County did not have many, which I always love a good clean audit. So thank you Patty for doing a nice work. Deficiencies noted in internal controls, those are just errors that we, or problems in the internal controls that we kind of ran into, that, and these ones are, or this one item is big enough to be included as an audit report comment, which if that other page that I gave you, the scheduled prior and current audit findings, it's got the draft watermark across it. That's kind of just a summary of the changes that were made to the financial statements, any reporting errors that we ran into. Some of those had to do with the way that our linked report is set up. And there are various adjustment columns that just, a lot of counties don't really, the first year using that, didn't really understand how those worked, so sat down with Patty and out there, figure out that report a little bit more, so hopefully that helps. But as far as number one underneath there, yeah, that's just talking about reporting errors, which resulted in inaccurate information being presented to anyone who might look at your annual financial reports that are published each year. The only recommendation for that is to just kind of make sure that you're double checking those and how things are reported, and I think maybe me sitting down with Patty might have helped that hopefully, so if not, she can always contact me and ask questions if she has them. Otherwise, if you would just take a look at that scheduled prior audit findings, does anyone have any questions on that?
I have none.
Okay. You guys, as a board, have the ability to, you can choose to respond to that finding by saying something like, we'll work to correct this. Or you have the option to just say, management chose not to respond, so. Do you have any idea how you'd like to handle that?
Well, for some reason, when I, my packet is in there. So I must have missed it, so I have not read this yet.
Okay.
Has everybody else read it all the way through?
Not in detail, no.
I mean, that's, that's fine, I don't need an answer right now either. If you guys want to just, when Patty sends me that signed representation letter, if you wanted to shoot, shoot me in that email what you guys chose to do for that, you want it to just remain stating, management chose not to respond, that's fine, otherwise, whatever you guys decide to do, just let Patty let me know.
All right.
Do you have any recommendations for strengthening internal controls? I know it's usually not enough people, and you know, we're a smaller county, so we don't have a lot of people in that office.
As far as this reporting error comment, a lot of that mostly just had to do with the way that the report was set up, and I'm not sure that because it was relatively new at that time, I don't really think that a lot of people understood how it worked. They weren't really major issues, it was, a lot of it had to do with the way that it was linked. So Patty's doing a good job reporting things, she was really helpful and willing to sit down and talk through the adjustments that I had posed, and if she has any questions, she can always reach out to either myself or Jeff or somebody else, but as far as the strengthening of internal controls, it's kind of just double checking work and making sure that you're getting in as close as possible, but.
Thank you.
Yep. Back to that management letter then, the deficiencies noted in internal controls that are not going to be in the audit report, it's just important enough for me to tell you guys about. The county jail, and this was a problem noted in the last audit also, they do not have an amount, they don't have support that states what the amount in their bank account is actually for, who it actually belongs to. Some of them had to do with like inmate accounts that the inmate, for instance, got out and just said, keep it, I'll probably be back, which is kind of sad, but that's the truth of how it goes, so it's kind of, the only recommendation of that is kind of just recommending that the jail tries to establish who that money actually belongs to and where where it goes and kind of keeps track of that. But otherwise.
Cash out the account when the inmate leaves, that they, if they have funds associated with them, they cash out at the time that they leave?
Yeah, I think they can, but some of them, they just say, keep it, I'll be back, which is sad, but. So I would imagine they have a listing kind of of who the inmate accounts belong to, but there's other money in there that isn't really, I mean, it's there, they just don't really know where it goes specifically, so.
What's the dollar amount that you're talking about with?
I am not sure what that is right now, actually. I don't have it pulled up, sorry. It wasn't material, but it was enough to at least let you guys know about. Let me try to pull it up for a second.
So that's really not, not the county's fund necessarily, I know it's under our fund, but it's inmate funds that are left over after incarceration that.
Some of them, well, that's the problem. Some of them are inmate funds, other, there's a certain amount that is the county's. But there's not really a listing of whose money that is, like, or for what purpose it is for. Necessarily, like, for instance, you guys have your, the county as a whole, like your general fund, you know how much of the cash in the county belongs in the general fund and how much of it belongs in the road and bridge fund. The jail doesn't necessarily know what their breakout is. And I think, at the end of, like, I just have this, the October 2016 bank statement pulled up, because that was the quickest one that I could find, and the balance in the bank statement for the jail fund was like $33,000, so it's not a major amount. It's just kind of trying to think of, or trying to keep track of exactly what that money is for.
Thank you.
Yep. Material violations of laws, the next item, there were none that would be in the audit report. The only one that's a big enough deal for me to mention to you guys is you have a jail building fund, which is different than your jail capital projects fund. And you've supplemented the, if I remember correctly, it was supplemented throughout the year for expenditures, so that was okay. But when you approve your budgets in October, well, yeah, the end of September, I noticed like on your official adopted budget, there was no jail building fund adopted. So when you're going through your budget process for 2022, just try to make sure that any special revenue or remaining funds in the county actually do have a formally adopted budget for them. Otherwise, yeah, the only, that was, it was just that. The fact that the jail doesn't keep a subsidiary listing and some reporting errors, but otherwise, you guys are a pretty clean audit, which is always good.
Any other questions?
No, I'd just like to thank Patty and her team for such a great job. I know it's a lot of work, and thank you Patty.
Yeah, I would also like to thank Patty and her team and everyone in that county, because you guys do a pretty good job for what you're dealing with, so. It was, it's always nice to have a good clean audit. So.
So I have one, one question for you.
Yep.
Federal dollars that are heading our way, will we have to have yearly audits?
Um, well, you don't currently have yearly audits, it's every two years.
Correct.
Right. I don't know how that will work with the federal grants coming in. I know that it will be, because if you're over that $750,000 threshold, which I'm sure a lot of counties are, that will be a federal compliance audit, but I'm not sure if that would be yearly or not.
All right.
I guess I haven't quite heard on that yet.
All right. Thought I'd ask.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know.
That's all right, I appreciate your, your candor. Well, thank you for your time this evening.
Yep, thank you. The only two things I need is just a signed copy of that when Patty gets a chance, and then whether or not you guys choose to respond to that comment, it's up to you, you don't have to, so.
All right.
Let me know.
All right, thank you.
Perfect, yep, thank you. You too. Yep, thank you Patty.
All right, so if anyone cares to make a motion to take action tonight, we will. Otherwise, we will put it on our next agenda for final action on the two things that she needs. Any choice?
I'd put it on the agenda for next.
For May 4?
Yeah.
Okay.
What will that?
So we need to have approval for me to sign whatever letter, the one with our letterhead on it, that one, so we need to give approval for me to sign that, and then how to respond. If anyone wants to actually make a comment, or if we want to leave that yellow comment at the very end, which was management chose not to respond.
It'd be fine moving forward tonight with.
With that?
With that and giving you authority.
To sign, so.
Same, same here, I, we got enough on the agendas.
Okay, so at that, given that, I would entertain a motion to cover those two items.
I'd move to authorize our chair to sign the Legislative Audit Report Response. And to leave our responses, no action taken.
How about management chose not to respond to this finding?
Yeah, management chose not to respond to this finding.
There we go. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve the chair signing the document and leaving management's response at management chose not to respond to this finding. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Item number eight, we're about on time, and this is Risti Benefits Insurance. Mr. Risti. Yep, and you're going to need to turn it on, so there should be a little button, and when it's on, there'll be a little red light lit. You've got it.
All right.
And when you're speaking, you're welcome to take your mask down so we can hear you better.
I appreciate it, I can breathe too.
Uh, thank you for allowing us to, uh, to come and visit with you. Uh, we've got about 30 minutes with, uh, with material, but, uh, I see we've only been allowed five minutes, so I'm going to talk fast. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to read some of the material that was handed out in your pocket, a packet ahead of time. Uh, my name is Roger Risti. I'm the founder of Risti Benefits. This is Sonya Nordby. She's one of the key principles with Risti Benefits. I've been in the business for about 45 years. As the material indicated, uh, we've got a lot of experience working with governmental entities. Our largest client is the state of South Dakota. We do business with 39 counties across the state, a number of school districts and other nonprofits. Uh, I spent 15 years on the Sioux Falls School Board. I was chairman of the ASBSD, the Associated School Boards. Understand governments, I understand your budgets and how you work your budgets because I've been there, I've done that. Uh, we're associate members of the County Commission Association. We're associate members of the Elected Officials Association. We attend all your workshops. We'll be in Pima, uh, May 3rd and 4th for the workshop up there will be at your annual convention. I have done meetings all across the state, i- in just about every courthouse, uh, commission uh, across the state at one time or another. All we do is employee benefits. I don't do property casualty, I don't do homeowners and auto, I don't do workers compensation. We specialize in employee benefits, that being medical dental vision. We can bring things, because we specialize, we think we can bring things to the table uh, that other agents have not thought of or cannot bring to you because they don't have the ability to do that. I'm going to turn it over to Sonya quick. She's going to highlight a few things for you.
Uh, sure, we really pride ourselves on the value added services that we can bring to, um, our, our customers. It's not always about the bottom line, it's, it's what else you can, can bring to them, educate them and provide them, uh, as far as benefits and things to make their lives easier. And so we do have, it's called My Wave Connect and it's an online portal for the HR for, or for any, um, anyone that handles compliance. It's, it's a very massive, it's, it's a national portal. It's updated constantly with compliance documents, uh, templates, uh, anything that you may need, um, even to create wellness programs or programs for your group. And that's going to be on the right-hand side where it's got My Wave Toolbox, uh, compensation statements, uh, anything that you need to hang in, uh, in the break room for compliance and, and updates for filings. And, uh, you know, it, it's a great tool that I help my clients utilize. I had one client call wanting an, uh, employee assistant program, an EAP. And we logged in there and there, there was a 30-page document because EAPs can be so complex or so simple, where do you start? And there was a 30-page document we walked through that, uh, helped, gave them guidance on, on what to build for, for their group. So just a plethora of information and great tools and we do provide that at no cost. And it is, it is a, it is a great program. Also, we, um, there's just examples of some of the compliance overviews, uh, that you would find on this, this portal that you are able to utilize, uh, as a, a client of Risti Benefits. And then the benefits buzz, you know, talks about COVID updates and everything like that. Uh, so a great tool for HR or anybody in your department that might need information such as that. And then of course, a benefit summary. These are great employees, love these or clients love these. It's a handbook, um, that's going to have all the pertinent information that you're going to want to be able to hand out to your employees. It tells them what benefits they have, who, who they should reach out to if they have questions, you know, our, our information here at Risti Benefits. And it's going to have your medical, your dental, any, anything you provide. We even put in, uh, any retirement plans that you want in there, uh, even though we don't assist with those, uh, we are able to add that, anything you want in your, in your handbook to hand to your employees. And then most importantly, of course, is to stay compliant, is at the back of it, we're going to have your COVID information and your summary plan, um, benefits of coverage, uh, which you're, which you're, uh, have to hand out to your employees. So these are great to have and we do build these for you at no cost and provide them to you for your employees. So, um, we, like I said, it's, it's not always about the bottom line, but service and value added benefits. And, uh, we just, uh, request the opportunity to be able to quote and provide some, maybe some options that you don't currently have or haven't thought about.
Just a couple more things, uh, the, the benefit book, those are usually 60 to 80 pages long. As Sonya said, we build those, it's got everything you need to know. It needs, uh, it's going to tell you who to contact, uh, email addresses, phone numbers for all your benefits, it's going to be a simple, uh, simple, simple summary of all the benefits that you have your employees. We're going to put that in the PDF format or put it on a, uh, a drive and, uh, HR or the auditors, uh, can print those off and you have a new employee, here's everything they need to know about your benefits. If you have somebody comes in and says, well, how's our dental plan work? Well, where's your book? Well, I lost it. Well, here's another one. Everything they need to know is going to be right in that book. One last thing before we wrap up and I probably already eat my five minutes up. Uh, we are currently working with, and you might've got the email today already, I don't know about the, the commissioners. We're currently working with Bob Wilcox and Chris Jacobs with the Commission Association to put together what is called a meanwhile, multiple employer welfare arrangement, uh, bringing all the counties together under one umbrella, one plan. And, uh, that letter went out today, or an email went out today to all the counties, uh, asking if they want to participate and to help send us some information. Uh, that's not something that's going to happen overnight. Uh, it's going to be a nine to 12-month process, easy from start to finish on this, but I just wanted to let you know that we are working with your state association and your state officers also to bring different arrangements back to the counties. Other questions?
So do you broker the insurance that's listed here, like the dental and all that? You go out and search for plans for us and bring those? You search for health plans? All of that?
All, all of that. Uh, we're an independent broker. Uh, we work with every known, uh, provider in the state of South Dakota and we have exclusive access to two additionals that nobody else does.
Okay.
As, as I indicated, we, uh, we do work with, uh, 29 counties across the state so far. Several of them are right here within, uh, an hour drive of, of Yankton. We're down here all the time. And, um, it's not inconvenient for us to come down at any time to do employee meetings uh, or meet with the commission or, uh, anybody else that needs us to meet with. Other questions? Lot of information in five minutes. I apologize for, uh, for speeding through it. Trying to keep you on time. I understand.
That's pretty elusive for this group sometimes. Any questions right now?
All we're asking at this point is for the opportunity to bring you options, alternatives.
Okay.
So you want?
We want to be.
You want to get us some quotes?
Yes.
This is what I'm, I guess I don't see any harm in having us, having them get us a quote.
So our health insurance, are you aware of where we're at in that?
I do.
Cycle?
Sure.
Okay. So it's up to you whether you would like to bring us a quote. Our next meeting, we have to make a decision.
I understand that. So what we're going to do is if we have the permission to go ahead, we'll send an email out and, uh, if you have all the information we need, we can have numbers back in a very short period of time.
Okay.
If we gotta have a special meeting or something too, to look over stuff, I wouldn't have an issue with that.
Can, can you provide us the list of the 29 counties that you work with?
Um, I, we can with the ones that we've used in referral, but I like to reach out to them and make sure that's okay. So, but I know you guys probably do communicate anyway, so it's probably not an issue, but yeah, happy to do that.
Yeah, I just want to clear with, uh, with the, the, the commission and our auditors before we do that, but yes, we can do that.
All right. Any other questions?
We'll get out of your way. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming down.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, we are at item number nine, Mr. Better.
You have two plots in front of you tonight. Uh, the first one is plat of lot 32 in Bay Cliff Estates located in the west half of the south, 12.91 acres of the south half of the southwest quarter of section seven and in the west half of the west half of section 18, lying north of highway 52, except platted areas known as Tramp's seventh edition and accept lots one and two of parcel A and further accepting parcels B and C McFay edition, all being in township 93 north, range 56 west to the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval of the plat.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to approve the Bay Cliff Estates Plats for lots one, two, three, four, and five. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries. Oh, that was lot 32. I read the second line, sorry, my mistake, but the motion was good. So now the second one, sorry about that, Mr. Better.
Second one is plat of lots one, two, three, four, and five of track B law overlook subdivision in the northeast quarter of section 18, township 93 north, range 56 west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to approve the plat, uh, the law overlook subdivision. Further discussion?
Do you know how many more, how much more area that Bob Law would have in that area?
Um, that one, there's a fair amount of, of land, yet, uh, the Bay Cliff one, I think is just about sold out and Crestview's getting close to that also.
We're running out of lots out there.
There is, it is getting an issue.
Further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. That concludes item number nine. So item number 10 is our Cookta rezone and this is the second reading for this.
Correct. This is a second reading for the purpose of rezoning the following properties from rural transitional district RT to moderate density residential R2. Said properties are described as track three DJs addition county of Yankton, South Dakota as per plat recorded in book S19 page 350, track five, a DJs addition in lot A, section 16 township 93 north, range 55 west to the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, track four DJs addition, Yankton County, South Dakota as perplanted in book S20 page 85, track one DJs addition, Yankton County, South Dakota, lots A excluding tracks one through six DJs addition and the east 558 feet of lot B, Yankton County, South Dakota and track six DJs addition in lot B, section 16 township 93 north, range 55 west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, here in referred to as Mission Hill South Township, County of Yankton, state of South Dakota. And, uh, at the conclusion of this hearing, Yankton County Commission may recommend adoption of Yankton County Ordinance Number 21 Z N O two.
What was that number again? 21 Z M?
Z N O two.
N O two. I was going to write M. Gotcha. All right, since this is a public hearing, we will take public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment at this time? There being no interested parties, public comment is closed. I'll bring it back to the commission for final discussion on this rezone application. Looking at article 22 amendments or rezoning, um, as I read through items one, two, three, four and five, those are all completed, five being the notice of time and place for this hearing. So item number six, county commission shall hold the public hearing, review the proposed amendments with regards to section 2003 and by resolution, exactly what Mr. Better just said, so 2003. And if I'm not mistaken, we, did we walk through some of these last time?
I believe we did.
To make sure that we didn't have an issue before we got to the second reading. Are there any items that we need to revisit tonight?
I'd make a motion to approve the rezone.
I'll second it, but we need, I think we need to make sure we got all these things, uh, in 2003 wrapped up, I guess.
All right, would you, since you, since you volunteered to do that, Commissioner Healy, I'll let you walk through those.
Okay. Well, uh, five is one that, um, I think needs review in the future anyway, but it's a written finding or written, uh, findings from the county commission, um, with compliance to the comprehensive plan, specific rules governing land uses, uh, zone dis, zoning district regulations and satisfactory provision and arrangement has been made concerning the following where applicable. I do believe we went through the comprehensive plan, uh, discussion.
Yeah.
All these at the last meeting. I guess my hangup or my question should be, um, do we need these in a motion to have the written findings or how do we technically need to do this? And that's kind of been done at the planning level, so if we approve on findings of fact, we should be okay.
And Dan, did you make your motion based on findings of fact?
Yeah, it's all in the packet here.
I think.
Now we've, we've done enough.
Yeah, the area they're looking to rezone is suited to, uh, more to the R2 and, and it bits.
Makes sense.
There's an R2 just north, is it just a half a mile north? And then north of that is a commercial district already. So essentially we're converting ag land to residential and I know this was discussed at the last planning commission meeting as a concern, but since as you pointed out, this is already amongst, it's very near to the city of Yankton itself. Um, so its influence, its negative influence on agriculture is probably minimized versus if this section was sitting up in central township where I live.
Right. And I think this, the, the lots there exhibit characteristics of a, of a residential more so than agriculture. So its current usage, um, is probably argue is mislabeled as agriculture.
And it is RT, it is not zoned agriculture, it's uses.
That is, that is true. Thank you.
A good, another point too, is I was for a walk the other day and on the corner of fourth and Peacock, there's a sign that says, this is the site of Colonel Peacock's originally 460 acre farmstead. And if they would have taken the stance back in the 1900s that we're not going to develop and allow people to live in the city of Yankton, Yankton wouldn't be where it is today in a thriving community. So this just makes sense to turn this into residential zone property. So I hope, I hope what we vote to rezone this.
Don, did you have any questions or comments? Any further discussion on this? We will do a roll call vote since this is a rezone.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Uh, rezone will now be advertised, correct? There are still some sections that have to be reviewed and. All right, that closes out item number 10. We are now at item number 11, which is a joint powers agreement, eighth amendment.
Hi Al.
Is Amy?
Al is here.
Oh, Al's here, sorry, you're sitting by and I'm short, I can't see above the podium.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, this is pretty, uh, perfunctory in that you've done this eight other times now. You did this once for the original joint powers and you did it for seven other amendments. It's something that the, uh, board of, uh, natural resources, water and natural resources, they require it. And my understanding of the whole goal behind. And my understanding of the whole goal behind their requiring this is they want to encourage that we have regional landfills. And this is their way of kind of trapping you and do another twenty years, so to speak. But again, that's the whole reason behind why the joint powers were set up in the first place was to come up with a regional landfill versus four, or five, or six smaller ones that other, that our communities, both Yankton and Vermillion, and some of the smaller communities around us operated, so.
So if I interpreted this right, where are we adding thirty years to this?
Yep.
And then Vermillion borrowed two million?
Yep.
Okay, are those the two major changes essentially?
Yep, yep, exactly. And, and I would remind you that it wasn't, wasn't all borrowed, you know, it's another thing that the D E N R, I'm sorry, not D E N R, it's Department of.
D A N R.
Yeah, they've changed it, so. But anyway, one of the other incentives was we had applied for almost two million five hundred thousand. They granted us five hundred thousand in grant money that doesn't have to be repaid, and then loaned the additional one million nine hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions?
I'd move approval to the eighth amendment to revise joint powers agreement. Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to move the eighth amendment, to approve the eighth amendment to the joint powers agreement. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. All right, that was item number eleven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
We are at item number twelve with, which is our health insurance renewal. I see Julie's in the audience, so I'll just have you come on up while we start discussing this. It's a lot of stuff to look at.
Hello, Julie.
Hi. Good evening.
So I did make some phone calls to both Avera and United Healthcare, and in your email, there was a bunch of additional stuff they sent me for you guys to look through if you'd like. So I did sit down with Julie, was it last week?
Last week, Wednesday.
Already.
Yes.
Yep, and started talking, looking at, just trying to understand some of the differences in these proposals. Obviously, huge difference if you, if you just look at the very bottom in the costs for the plans. If we do choose, and all the costs at the bottom are based on ninety-five employees, if we do choose to renew our current Wellmark plan, it will be an additional almost thirty-four thousand dollars.
Correct.
If we would choose to renew with United Healthcare, that would be about twenty-nine thousand less than we're paying now. So if you add those two together, that's about a sixty thousand dollar difference between Wellmark and United Healthcare. If we choose to go with Avera, we are sixty-one thousand below what we pay today. And if you add that to the Wellmark, if we would renew, that's about ninety-four, ninety-five thousand dollars less than what it could be if we went with Wellmark. So that's cost. And looking at the plans themselves, I did have Patty put out some feelers to other counties to see if they had United Healthcare experience. Two counties did respond. The one county had them for one year and then chose to switch to another provider. And then we do have a county right now that has United Healthcare. Their feedback on that change was the difference in how PPOs operate. So for example, if I have a PPO and I take my child into the doctor at Yankton Medical Clinic, I'll just use that as an example, because he's got a fever, I have a copay, and the copay for, actually, I think since it's a child, copay under United Healthcare would be zero if I'm reading.
Correct. That is correct.
And under the Wellmark plan, it's thirty-five dollars, I think.
Correct.
But, and so under Wellmark, that whole visit would be paid for. Under United Healthcare, the visit would be paid for unless they did an additional test, a blood test, something like that.
Or lab, any kind of lab work, x-ray, anything in addition to actually seeing the doctor. Correct.
So United Healthcare would require me to pay for the x-ray. They needed an x-ray of his lungs to see if he had bronchitis or something like that. So I, I, that to me, and you can comment, Patty, was the major comment back from the county who has just switched over was that is, that's a change for PPO people who are used to going to writing your check for thirty-five bucks and you walk away and everything's paid for.
Quick, can I add, Sherry, one thing, you know, that is, it is unique for Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield too. They aren't, their plans, our new plans being offered are, behave just like United Healthcare. So it, it is a special benefit that Yankton County has included in their Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield plan.
Yep, and technically, at any time, they could probably change it.
Correct. Correct.
So, but as far as health savings accounts, those plans are very similar. Now, the Avera copay plan, the PPO, would work very similar to United Healthcare.
Correct.
In that they wouldn't pay for the x-ray, but they'd pay for the doctor visit.
Correct. It completely pays for the visit to the doctor. That's correct.
Yes. So HSAs, and I think the, so that, so when you look at the PPO plans, that's really the major difference. Now, the PPO deductible for Avera and Wellmark is six thousand. United Healthcare is five thousand.
Yes.
So they do have a lower deductible in what they are offering for their costs.
And the max out of pocket is a little less too.
Yes, you're correct. Yep.
Do the additional x-rays and blood tests, that would go to out-of-pocket expense when you go to the doctor, right?
It would go to your deductible. Yeah.
And they're, they're paying prorated expense because they're insured, they're not paying the, the full price for an x-ray?
Whenever you, when you have health insurance, you receive a discount, and that discount is negotiated with the health insurance company. So it could be different for every insurance company, but yes, there are discounts. Yes.
Okay, so we did talk about the drug plan. All of the PPOs have a drug plan. And I did get confirmation from Avera today that
Yes.
the HSAs have a generic drug plan.
They do, and it's for, it is for generics and generics only. Correct.
Yep, and I believe I sent the list of all the drugs that, that could be considered for that.
Correct.
And so you would not need to meet your deductible on an HSA before you could get a generic drug off that list. Now, if you had a specialty drug, then that would go toward your deductible.
A specialty drug or a tier one, tier two, or tier three.
There you go.
Only generics.
The United Healthcare, one of the HSAs listed here, and that's the HSA five thousand, has a drug plan. And when I talked to him this morning, if you look, the HSA five thousand means your deductible is five thousand. And that's the point where their drug plan kicks in.
Correct.
So then, the max out of pocket is actually six thousand because they're sharing cost on the drugs up to six thousand.
Correct.
And after six thousand, they pay for all the drugs.
Correct.
I, I hate just referring to drugs and, and, and things, but it's a very important part of our plan.
It is very important part of the plan because you do have a significant number of folks using different medications on the plan.
So if you hit your five thousand deductible and you break your other arm, that's all covered. You don't have to go up to six thousand.
Correct.
So that additional thousand dollars, I want a clarification on, is only for the drug plan.
Correct.
On that. Do you want to talk about the family deductibles and the embedding?
Okay, there, in, in some cases with HSA plans, and it just, it all depends on the plan and the carrier. They have, you, if you have a family plan, your deductible goes to that family deductible, whether there's one person meeting it. In order for the insurance company to hit the max out of pocket, the entire, you would have to hit that entire family deductible. With both, all three of these companies, the, in single deductible. So if you, if you have an employee that takes a family plan and one person becomes ill and that uses the health insurance in the year, you do not have to hit the family deductible. You just have to hit the individual single deductible with the HSA plans. That is unique, that is unique to HSAs in some cases. Typically, you have to, no matter what, you have to hit that family deductible in order for it to be, hit your max out of pocket to be met. Okay? So that it is, that is nice, that single deductible is embedded into the plan. Have I made myself clear? Okay.
Sort of.
Okay.
That's only if, if one individual in the family, so if two in, individuals were to utilize it, then you, now you have to meet the family.
Because that is, that's what, it, it's twice the deductible, so yes, that would be the situation. But you have situ, you have a case where one person is ill in the family, no one else, everybody else is healthy. And so if you have to hit that family max out of pocket, that's a big, that's a big leap. But this way, it is just the single. Correct.
Okay.
It's on all three. It's on all three. Correct.
So the other thing the United Healthcare gentleman mentioned this morning was there is a motion plan that's associated with the HSAs. And so he said that is if an employee wears a Fitbit or some kind of a pedometer, you can earn up to three dollars per day that they'll put in your HSA for you. And it depends on how far you walk. So if you walk ten thousand steps a day, you get a dollar.
Correct.
If you walk five hundred steps and so many, I didn't catch all of it. But anyway, you, you can work your way up, so he did want to make sure that we understood that that was included. And if you didn't have an Apple Watch or a Fitbit, they would send you a pedometer to use.
Correct.
Put it on my kid?
Yeah. You can put it on you when you're chasing your kid. Virtual visits are at no cost on all plans
Correct.
for United Healthcare.
Correct.
And that would include if your doctor saw you virtually and gave you a prescription and everything, and then so that would be covered as well. I did ask if people could go out to the website, a website and search, and he said yes. So that if you are an employee of the county and you're watching tonight, you can go out to my U H C dot com, go to provider search, and all of these plans are choice plus network. And he said you should be able to search for a doctor. I didn't verify that.
You can. Yes, you can. You can put in your doctor and search, and they will tell, remember how we talked about there are tiered doctors? And you can put in the name of your doctor, you'll find out there, that has excellent coverage of doctors in the area, but there are preferred, and then there's standard preferred, so you can choose. And then that just basically means that you get a better discount by using that specific doctor. They're all, they're all in the network. You'll be in network. It's just you get a better discount.
Okay.
Of course.
I know.
So those were some of the, the differences, I guess, that they pointed out on the phones today. I did make a point of calling Avera because I wanted to know their coverage. So some of the information that Julie kindly provided me, the top ten facilities that our employees used last year, number one was Avera Sacred Heart Hospital.
Correct.
And obviously, that's a hundred percent covered by Avera. Avera McKinnon Hospital, Sulan Surgery Center was covered, Sioux Falls Specialty Hospital, Mercy One Sulan Medical, Yankton Surgical Center, and Pioneer Memorial Hospital were all in the Avera coverage area. Two that are listed here that are not was, we had two employees use Sanford in Sioux Falls, and we had one employee use a Nebraska Medicine. And those would not be in the Avera network.
Correct.
Because I know the last couple of times we've reviewed insurance plans, it's been concerning for the narrowing possibly of the providers available in the preferred network, not necessarily, you can't go with it to them, but they wouldn't be, they'd be out of network.
Correct, and that would drop you then down to the out-of-pocket, you know, the, the higher out-of-pocket because you're out of network.
What was the Nebraskan one?
It's in, it's in Omaha.
Is that covered under?
Not under Avera, no.
Not under Avera.
But under United Health.
United Healthcare would.
Yes.
United Healthcare covered all of these
Yes.
facilities.
Yes.
And how, how many employees was that that chose to go to different?
To Nebraska was one, and to Sanford was two.
So.
To give you an idea, and that was just the top ten facilities.
Avera Heart Hospital's not on there?
Oh, yes. Avera would be included. Avera Heart Hospital.
All of them.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes, on all the, on all the. The Blue Cross Blue Shield and United Healthcare's networks pretty much intertwine. Avera, of course, is, is specific to Avera facilities or facilities that they have agreements with. So it, you know, you are, it does narrow your network. And Avera did call, I emailed, and they also are including free of charge a wellness membership to the wellness facility here in Yankton. I can't remember what it's called, but the new wellness facility also included in their proposal for this evening. So.
So there'd be like a gym membership or something?
Gym membership, correct, at no charge. For all year, so.
That's for all the employees then?
Yes.
That's a good benefit. I know there's quite a few that have a separate membership and, you know, it's a good option. It's nice that they include.
Yes, very nice, very nice.
And that's through, through Avera?
Through Avera, correct.
It's, is that at their, Avera facility that's not Great Life? It's the facility in the hospital, I assume?
Correct.
Okay. Still a nice benefit.
So currently, what the county has, what we chose to do last year was to offer three plans. And the county paid for the middle plan, which was essentially the HSA five thousand plan. So if we, if we keep with that model, I'll give you an idea. If we renew with Wellmark, that is a seven hundred twenty-three dollar premium. And that's eight thousand six hundred, about eight thousand seven hundred per employee per year. If we would choose United Healthcare, our premium would be about six seventy a month, or about eighty-four hundred per year. So that's about two hundred dollars per employee less. And if we went with Avera, it's about six forty a month, and each employee is about eighty-four hundred. Wait a second. I'm looking at the wrong thing.
No, no, no.
Yep, so, okay, so seven twenty-three, then the six seventy for eight thousand, and the six forty for seventy-seven hundred. Sorry, I've got a second sheet I want to go over next. So it kind of gives you an idea. There, there's a significant change in those. Now, historically, or last year, we chose if an employee maximized their deductible, we gave them each seventy-five hundred, or seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
And twenty employees
Used it.
met their deductible last year, so it cost us fifteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
So if we keep with that same structure, Wellmark is eight hundred thirty-nine thousand. United Healthcare is seven hundred seventy-seven thousand. And Avera is seven hundred forty-four thousand. So one thing I think that maybe we need to consider is if we choose to change plans, either the Avera or the United Healthcare, there's a pretty good savings to the county. The PPO will be affected. And so if we wanted to keep our cost almost exactly the same as, as what we're paying this year, so this year we were at eight hundred and five So this year, we were at 805,000. If we go with United Healthcare, we can actually give every employee $400 and end up at 800,000. And so that $400 would go into their HRA instead of matching deductibles.
And the one thing you have to remember about that HRA is that your plan is designed to be a reimbursement. So they would be reimbursed as they spent that $400. You couldn't just put it into, I did some more research, tax research.
Got you.
You can't just deposit $400 into their account. It would have to be.
If they used it.
Correct. If they used it. So if, because you have half of your employee, more than half of your employees not utilizing their health insurance. So if they use it for whatever, if they go to the doctor and they have to pay for that lab work or that x-ray, that would be where they would be reimbursed for those expenses.
So they would have 400 and it would keep our cost at $5,000 less than we paid last year.
Correct.
If we went with Avera, to keep 800,000, we could, we could pay 750 per employee. So that's just food for thought on if we do choose to transition. And I would suggest we don't make a decision tonight because this is a lot of stuff to digest.
Have the department heads weighed in on what they'd like to see?
No.
I don't think I've heard any feedback or unless I got an email this afternoon, but.
I know a lot of them really like the process.
Yes.
One thing I want to note with United Health, you know, that drug plan looks very beneficial. There's some really good things with it. But one thing I do want to note with the PPO and the HSA 6500 plan.
Mm hmm, 6350? Because their deductible is actually less, yeah.
Yeah, I see. That was the out of network. So their in-network deductible is less than the other plans. The out-of-network deductible is twice that, though.
Correct.
So just something to keep in mind.
Yep. And their network should be very similar to Wellmark.
Should be, yeah.
Yes.
I wonder if there'd be a simple way of, you know, gathering all this information for each one? You know, HSA and all of this and give it to the head of the departments? And to check with their, with their employees?
Like just one of these?
I can email that to you to send to all the.
I wonder, do you think this is kind of confusing? Do you think, or not really?
Hmm.
I think to them, my, what they're going to be concerned with is is copays and max out of pockets, I would think, and then where their network is. Generally, what you're.
When I'm visiting with the employees, the the main, the main reason that a lot of employees choose the copay plan is the prescription drug coverage. And they go to the doctor. They don't want a big doctor bill. So they they see their physician quarterly or, you know, they see their physician often. So we, you know, we are slowly increasing family coverage. We're up to four families now, whereas when I started as your agent, you had zero. So, you know, yes, your rates are are high, but they're still less than individual coverage on the market. So and it is Wellmark, Blue Cross Blue Shield. The United Healthcare is is a, is another option. It's, it's, you know, it's something that we certainly can try. And Avera, you're, you're just, you're narrowing your network, that you're narrowing your network for a significant savings, for sure.
Now, into the HRA account, that's reimbursed, but we could contribute to an HSA.
Okay, you, you can match funds in an HSA for your employees. But the HRA allows the employer to contribute. And of course, you're a municipality, so it's not tax favorable, favorable basis. But what's nice is that you can decide to, if they, if you deposit money into that account, you can decide, and if they don't spend it, then you keep it here in the county. They cannot take it with them. It is not something that travels with them. You can also decide whether they can roll it over year after year and build it up. Yes, you do, the county does contribute to the 28 employees who have chosen the $6,500 HSA. The county has been contributing $29.64 to each, excuse me. How much was that? $40.68 to each employee's HSA.
HSA.
Who, HSA, who chose that? We're using the HRA simply as a reimbursement when they hit that max out of pocket.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, so I didn't mention the Wellmark PPO family renewal. And this will be the, the employee's cost is 14,200. And that's taking out what the county pays.
1400, 1400.
I'm looking at yearly, $14,000.
Yes.
A year, every family on the Wellmark PPO will pay. If we go with United Healthcare, it's 13,413. So it's $800 cheaper a year for a family on United Healthcare versus Wellmark. But again, you're giving up some cost savings at your, your doctor visit. And the Avera family plan is about 12,000. So 12,000, 13,400, 14,200 for the families. And the, the county only pays the, the flat rate for the employee. Any other questions for Julie on any of this? Because we do need to make a decision on May 4th.
Yes, we do, in order to get it implemented. And if we switch to, you know, if you do make a change from Wellmark to whomever, there's going to be several, there's going to be questions, so. And of course, we're here to answer all those and walk the, anytime there's change, there's, there's, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a discomfort. And so you have to maneuver through that. So we'll do employee meetings and and meet with every single person that wants to visit.
Okay.
Make sure that they're comfortable, okay?
All right, thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely. Anytime, you're welcome.
Thanks, Julie.
You bet. And thank you, Sheri, for your help.
All right, Mr. Hawkins, come on up.
Hey, Steve.
Hey, how's everybody?
Good.
We're just going to continue the insurance discussion, I guess. Just in a different, you know, different level, different type. So right off the bat, the, the, I've attached my spreadsheet. It kind of accounts for all the, for the last three months of accountability regarding calls, pay, how much we collected, how much we spent, all that type of stuff. And it looks like we're actually in the black for the first time in, I can't remember how long. Okay.
Challenges staying there now?
Yeah, staying there, but there's so, you know, I'm not gonna, there's so many different factors that weigh into that.
Well, congratulations.
I think we're on a good track right now, yes.
Big accomplishment. You deserve a lot of credit for this.
Well, thank, well, the crew does. They're the ones that work hard. So I'm just going to give you a few minutes to kind of look at this. Let me know if you have any questions before we move on.
Is Medicare and Medicaid paying again? Didn't they delay?
Medicaid has not stopped, Medicare has not. They stopped on January, on April 1. They will not start paying again until Congress decides to allow them to pay. So there was a break. All healthcare providers are seeing, are going to be seeing, we're going to see a decrease in our reimbursements. And you'll see that here in a little bit from Medicare, from Medicare. So it's all part of that last stimulus package. They weren't sure if they want to give us, give us a little bit of a discount or kind of continue a, some extra money that they were giving to us due to COVID last year. And so they're just continuing that, they want to continue it. Or I shouldn't say it that way. There's this, there's a discussion needs to take place whether they want to continue it or take it away. But until then, the payments will stop until Congress gets that worked out.
So on, I don't know what page it is, page five or four, there's a payer distribution. Medicare is 60%. And Medicaid is 8%. So about 68% aren't paying us right now.
Medicare, Medicaid is, is continuing.
So Medicaid is, so 60%.
So 60%, yeah. Medicare is our biggest payer. And they are going to stop paying now for a while. That money will eventually catch up once they start figuring out what they want to give us.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's stopping right now, yes.
So your next quarter might look so good.
So, you know, what, we were joking today, we'll take the hamburger, we'll buy everybody a hamburger, split it up, enjoy it this time, you know? So anyhow, then you can, there's just a whole bunch of different sheets in here talking about our base rate, how much we charged and who we charged and what the charges were over the last three months, where we collect, what kind of a breakdown in that. Then there's a list of payers, which is what Sheri was referring to. And you can see that our largest payer is Medicaid, Medicare, excuse me. So and then there's a big breakdown, it's just, just stuff. Didn't know if it's too much, not enough. Just wanted to give you guys, I got, now that we have Q and C, I have some really nice, I have access to a lot of really nice data and stats and some graphs that I can go by that pretty quickly.
How is your billing service working? Is it still going?
Well, they're doing really good. I mean, we're in the black.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, things are going well with them. And I think that it was, you know, just to refresh everybody's memory, it was kind of a decision that we, we had, we knew we had to make a change. It was either hire another person or hire a billing company. And the billing company, the way I look at it, is that other person. And we're, instead of doing all the training and waiting, we're just jumped right into it, so.
So it's been a good move.
Been a very good move, yes.
I'm glad to hear that, Steve.
Yes. So then, the next thing we need to talk about is, the one thing I do need a motion on is the activity summary adjustments. That's, this is that blue page, the thing that's highlighted in blue. And on the second page of that, at the very bottom, there's some yellow highlighted line and three numbers in red. And those are the adjustments that we, you guys need to approve. The first line in red is what's called the contractual, contractual allowances or adjustments. And those are the, you know, the automatic deductions that Medicare, Medicaid, and Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, those, those places that we have contracts with that that automatically take that away. So then the next red one is, what do they call it?
Revenue.
What's that? Revenue adjustments, thank you. Revenue adjustments, and that would be like, the good example would be workman's comp. We don't have a contract with workman's comp. However, by statute, they only have to pay 80% of the billable amount. So that they have to write, we have to adjust off that, that 20%. Same with that 5% discount thing that we're going to talk about here in just a few minutes. That's what that's about. And then.
So is that basically for an ambulance call where somebody was injured and workman's compensation? And that's what they're not going to, that we're going to have to write that off, basically?
Yes.
Got it, understood.
Yes.
Thank you.
And there's a couple of other things that that factor into that adjustable allowance as well. But that's, that's kind of the big one that we have to watch. And then, then just plain write-offs. And, and the, and a couple of those are, again, some workman's comps things, the county jail transports, you know, doesn't account for very much. When a bill gets to about three, when somebody's bill is at about $3, $4 is owed, Q and C just writes that off because it's not worth the man in the paper, the man, you know, the man hours in the paper to collect $4. So we have discussed, we have discussed whether or not we're going to sign a bill for $4 after we get it back, that kind of thing, so. But that's what, that's what those three red numbers are that we need to, to.
So the final red number, the $3,029.94, that's for write-offs?
That's, that's for just simple write-off. And if you can see, $2,800 of that is transports from the jail.
Okay, what's the other?
The other one, it looks like it might be some kind of an adjustment. We were all today trying to figure out what the UMR is, and we couldn't even find it in the, what that was. But we believe it's some kind of, well, a out-of-state workman's comp thing. And then, I think that, then the other one was a 5% discount, if I remember right, just a 5% discount from one of the jails, one of the prisons.
Rob, can we just make one motion for almost?
You just accept the report?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the last document that I have attached here is just the agent report. And we bust that agent report down pretty hard. And we actually had a meeting with Q and C today, looking at different, different places in the, in the 120 and 180 and trying to figure out where, where that holdup is and trying to get those.
Any other questions for Steve on this?
You know, thanks for the report. I'd move acceptance of the ambulance quarterly report.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Cuttering, to approve the ambulance quarterly report. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries for zero.
Again, one of the other topics I wanted to discuss was officially discussed, this 5% discount. It comes, it comes up pretty much each time that we, that we meet. Because it's not on the, so let me just start with this. Pre-Hawkins, somewhere in the past, they decided to give individuals a 5% discount if they paid their bill off in the first 30 days of receiving it. That has been discussed quite a bit over the last, well, many years, actually. Wasn't, you're not the only commission to bring that up. However, it was a commission-approved thing way back then. So I talked to Sheri and we felt like we needed to come back here, bring it to discussion, let you guys make a decision if you wanted to continue giving that. According to Q and C, nobody does. That is very un. And to be, in the answer, I know someone's going to ask how, who uses it? The people that use it is the, is the federal, the prisons. The, the insurance companies don't use it, the private citizen doesn't use it unless they come in and just, you know, pay. If they come in with a $800 check or $800, say, we want to pay it right off, Brendan will say, well, right now, if you're going to pay off, but within this day, you can, you'll take the 5, we'll take the 5% discount. So that's the only kind of news ever used.
So mostly, it's the federal government?
Mostly, it's the, yeah.
That's an easy decision, then. I mean, especially since they're not paying us Medicare, Medicare right now.
It's up to you guys on how you want to handle that.
I, I guess I feel, I mean, we're, you know, we're not making a lot of money on the ambulance. We're just trying to keep it above water. And, and if, you know, the federal prison's the one who uses it most, I guess I don't see a point in keeping it because they, they pay full price anyway, don't they? So.
Is that a motion, Dan?
I can make a motion to no longer authorize 5% discounts for the, effective immediately.
Would you, would you, just a second, would you like it like May 1st to make billing easier or does it not matter?
Either way, I, well, I have to notify them, so they need to get some time to get out in the mail, so.
So maybe June 1st or? June 1st?
Do May 1, yeah.
Or, or May 1?
May 1, whatever we out here.
May first.
May first, yeah, that's a week away, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So moved.
Thank you.
So, um, so Dan's motion is to stop giving the five percent discounts beginning May first. Don, you're good with seconding. So I have a motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to, um, as I just said, stop giving the five percent discounts for paying within thirty days, beginning May first.
Very good, thank you, and finally, we'll go.
Well, we're gonna vote on it first here, so hang on a second. Um, any discussion?
Move us forward.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. All right, last item.
So very much for, um, um.
The easiest decision, oh, thanks.
Exactly. We had, um, uh, Ebs, and just to remind you, uh, all of you, that we've got two part-time EMTs that are currently in paramedic school. They are going to be entering their last phase of paramedic, um, school, which is basically their internship, their internship. During this internship, they ride with a paramedic, um, who oversees them, um, taking care of patients. Um, it do, this, it creates a lot of extra work, a lot of paperwork, um, a lot of extra time, so, um, I wanted to see if you guys, I would like to give those paramedics that are, that are being the preceptors a forty dollar stipend for that particular shift or taking, you know, for training and overseeing that, that student paramedic. Over the last two years, three years, we've received about thirty thousand dollars from Department of Labor in that money to pay for this, um, for this, uh, uh, this training. Right now, I, um, this year, we received thirteen thousand four hundred dollars, um, in grant money for this. Uh, there, each student is required to ride, um, ten shifts, uh, that would be, um, there's two of them, so the max, the maximum, uh, the maximum salary additions on, it will be eight hundred dollars. And we have thirteen thousand set in the wings that we can add back, um, if needed, it didn't.
So you just want to authorize the stipend to come out of the grant money that you got for this, is that, is that right?
Correct me, but the way that I believe it works is that it just comes out of my budget, and then, if needed, if my budget falls short, then we add that thirteen thousand back into it. But the thirteen thousand, what's that?
Which it never does.
Which, yeah, it won't. And so you'll have that thirteen thousand, it'll just go in the general.
If we need, yeah.
Which, which will need it, right?
Yes. So, that's, that is kind of what I would like to do, just kind of give them a little extra. This is something that's, that in, this is a unique situation. Not always will we be in a, in a position that we will be able to offer this, and that those medics know that. Uh, be, and the only reason I'm coming to you now is because we have the grant money.
Hey, have you done this in the past, or?
Yes, we have, but we've not ever had any money to, to help with, with this, so.
Does anyone care to make a motion?
I'd move for a little Carrie's request. Second.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to approve a forty dollar per shift stipend, uh, for paramedic training.
Yes.
For further discussion, and that's not gonna exceed eight hundred dollars, correct?
It shouldn't, no. I mean, they, they're, they have to ride ten shifts, full hour shifts.
I'm fine if it doesn't exceed eight hundred dollars, if we want to add that to the motion, then I'd, I'd be fine with it.
So did you want to adjust your original motion?
That'd be fine, yes.
Would you like to continue seconding that?
Sure.
Adjustment. So now, Commissioner Kettering's motion is to approve the forty dollars per shift stipend to train paramedics not to exceed eight hundred.
What's that? Steve, are you referencing, there's two paramedics in the vehicle with the one person that needs to spend time with them?
Yes.
And then just one person.
But there, it's a paramedic and EMT, and the paramedic is the one that's doing the overseeing, is the, is the supervisor.
You're only doing that for one person.
For the paramedic, not the EMT.
For, yeah, for the one, one paramedic per shift, and there's two students, so.
So that would be twenty, twenty shifts then, or there's?
That'd be twenty shifts.
Wouldn't it be double? Wouldn't it be sixteen hundred?
No, it would be four hundred, four hundred.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be forty times ten.
Yeah. Right, you're good.
I know it might be, yeah, that's okay.
Thanks for watching us, though, sometimes. We get, that's all right, that's all right.
That's the first time that I moved a decimal point in one of my figures, so. We had me sweating for a minute.
All right, so further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Is that it?
Done, thank you.
All right, thank you for hanging around. We're a little behind schedule.
Thanks, Steve.
I think I saw Mr. Hunoff walk in. There you are. Go ahead and come on up.
Hi, Brian. Well, we had a really good quarter. We were very busy and collected a lot of fees. January, we've never had a January before where we went over thirty thousand in collections for the month, and we were just a little short of thirty-two thousand, so we had a record January. And February, we'd never had a February over twenty-five thousand, and we had, uh, twenty-six thousand, so we had a record in February. And March, we had a record March with thirty-six thousand one forty-five, so as you can well figure, we had a record first quarter. And, uh, you know, last year, April wasn't a real good month, but we've already, this month through April twentieth, collected more than we did all of April last year, so, and you know, even though April wasn't great last year, it was part of a record year, so we're pretty happy with those numbers. If you look at the, the quarter, I'm looking back, I don't think you have this, but I'm looking back at the first quarter from twenty twenty. And we had total of thirteen hundred transactions in the first quarter of twenty twenty, and eighteen hundred transactions, these are cash transactions, uh, this first quarter, so that's a difference of five hundred. Ever, just about everything across the board was up. Birth certificates, death certificates, uh, deeds, uh, first quarter last year, we averaged sixty-eight per month. This year, we averaged eighty-five per month. Mortgages last year, sixty-one per month in the first quarter. This year, a hundred and thirteen per month. Mortgage payoffs or satisfactions, your first quarter last year, we had seventy-two per month, this year, a hundred and twenty-two per month. So, copies revenue, uh, last year, we thought we were doing pretty good last year, we, uh, had two thousand nine hundred and forty-five per month. This year, we got four thousand six hundred and eighteen per month. So we're really, uh, putting up some good numbers this year, uh, transfer fees. Total fees collected first quarter last year was sixty-two, sixty-two thousand eight twenty-one, this year, ninety-four thousand one sixty-three. So, we're hoping the good numbers can continue, you know, there is a, a scarcity of real estate available, they keep saying, but we seem to keep having property sales, so. That's, uh, kind of the basics of it, if you have any questions.
People are getting busy again.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Move approval of the register of deeds, uh, quarterly report.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to approve the registered deeds report. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.
I'm just gonna give one little aside, if I could, uh, this is gonna be our last, my last quarterly meeting with, uh, Mike McDonald is our veteran service officer. And, uh, he's out in the hall listening. Uh, my staff and I are gonna really miss working with him, he was always good to work with. He's our neighbor, you know, up there on the second floor, and, uh, he's done a great job serving our veterans. I just, uh, I hope the, the new veteran service officer has big feet because he's got big shoes to fill. Just wanted to make it known that we really enjoyed, uh, our time working with him, I think it's been, what, eight years he's been here? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Next is the sheriff quarterly report, and the sheriff is not gonna be with us tonight, so. One thing I did want to make note of, I, I pulled the report at the end of, his report from the end of the last three years. At, if you look at the very, it's not quite the last page, but it's, it's the third from the last page, it's the jail billing for twenty twenty-one. That kind of keeps track of the income from our jail. In twenty eighteen, that number at the end of that year was one million nine hundred fifty thousand. At the end of twenty nineteen, it was one million six hundred twenty-five thousand. At the end of twenty one, twenty twenty, it was nine hundred twelve thousand. And if you take that number, that one seventy-one that's at the bottom there, and you multiply it by four, it's six hundred and eighty-four thousand. So, um, we're on a trend there that's pretty tough because of COVID. And that's one reason, hopefully, we're getting the allocation from the federal government, is to make up for those losses. But I'd wanted you to be aware, because the, the jail brings a lot of income to our county, and, uh, like I said, COVID's been pretty tough on us. Otherwise, I, I didn't have any other comments about his report.
I'd move approval of the sheriff's quarterly report.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the sheriff quarterly report. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. We are now at the veteran's service quarterly report. Come on up, Mr. McDonald.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome, sir.
Good night. Um, the contact report from March, or for the first quarter, um, were down a bit. For the month of March, we were down just three calls, but, but, uh, COVID has really taken quite a hit with, with, uh, contacts. And getting things done with the, with the VA. It is also kind of knocked down our, our riders on our, on our VA, our DAV van, it's also taken a toll on our drivers. I'm hoping that with, uh, the COVID shots that have, that have come about in the last two and a half months, that, um, we'll see some drivers that, uh, come back to us and assist in driving our veterans up to Sioux Falls. And, uh, if, for the, uh, for the sake of the cable TV broadcast of this meeting, if there's anybody out there that would like to, uh, be a volunteer, a DAV volunteer, I would have them contact Jamie Maximweek, she's the voluntary service coordinator at the Sioux Falls VA. Uh, her phone number is six oh five three 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 six eight five one. And again, that number is six oh five three 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 six eight five one. Uh, she has taken over that position in the last year, and has done a very good job of trying to put it into the twenty-first century and using, uh, computer, uh, data to, uh, coordinate getting new drivers lined up for our DAV van service. So folks out there, if you've got a day to spare where you can drive a couple, three veterans up for, for, um, medical, uh, treatment, please contact this lady. You can also call me at, uh, at two six zero four four two zero. I'll be here for another three or four days. Three days, excuse me. Okay, uh, and seeing this is my last hurrah, uh, I would like to publicly thank all the DAV van drivers I've had in the last seven and a half years. I have said this more than one time, those guys make me look like a million bucks. Because they get people to treatment, and it, and it affects more than just the veteran, it affects his family, it affects wife, or kids, or aunts, or rather, uh, nephews and nieces, people who took, who take a, a, a concern for the veterans and their family, and it, and it lets them go to work, it lets them get things done with their kids, it, it, it's just a real uh, asset to our community. And all these van drivers that I've had in the last seven years, just been peaches with me, I mean, they're just great people. And I would also like to thank, seeing that Brian Hunoff mentioned it, um, I'd like to thank the registered deeds folks because they gave me access to DD two-fourteens and, and answered questions for me, and, and it was, it was a team effort, and it helped me look good. And I, I couldn't have done it without them. And I, you know, I will miss this job. But, um, I hope, um, we get somebody here that really cares about taking, taking care of the veterans. And, uh, and sometimes you gotta be a little ornery about it, but, um, but it's a pretty good job, and I, I enjoy doing it. Okay. Is there anything, any questions that you'd have?
Well, I guess I'd just like to thank you for your, uh, service to Yankton County, and, uh, let's give Mike a round of applause for his years in.
I got about forty years in this. I did six years of active Navy and Navy Reserve. I did twenty-seven years with the Postal Service, and I did over seven years with this, and I've been in government employ for, for forty years, it's been worth it. I think if you get people that do the job for the right reasons, um, we got a pretty good thing going, and I sure hope that it, there's somebody out there, some young person out there that, that decides, you know, maybe I gotta do the same thing. And, uh, yeah, I've had a good time. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Yep, gonna miss you.
Move approval of the veteran service officer report.
Second.
The motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to approve the VSO quarterly report. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. We are at.
While we're kind of on that, have, have we got any applications for the temporary position?
We've got, uh, three right now.
How are we gonna go, I mean, you're the liaison, Don, did you have an idea on how you wanted to do that?
No, I haven't, uh, discussed it with Sherry and.
Sure.
I did get the one recommendation from Mike.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I would be willing, if you want to do, do interviews anytime, let me know, and start seeing who's interested in it.
Alrighty, item number seventeen, uh, welfare. Mr. Thurman.
Hi there.
Hello.
Buddy?
Hello.
Okay, um, first quarter of twenty twenty-one, I'll start off with the food pantry. Uh, we had, uh, two hundred and thirty visits to the food pantry representing, uh, four hundred and fifty-six people. One hundred and nine were listed as seventeen years of age or younger. We had nine repeat customers, which, uh, we're starting to track, um, which constitutes, uh, more than one visit in thirty days. Um, new clients, we had thirty-one new families and/or individuals that sought help from the contact center, either the food pantry or financial assistance or both. We had nine in January, nine in February, and thirteen in March. Emergency assistance, which is rental or house payment assistance, gas, oil, transportation, utilities, medication, and emergency lodging. Uh, we had thirty-five, um, households or individuals, um, totaling about just under thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, and uh, we did, we are open during the lunch hour, we have been to see if there's a need and to try to accommodate people that are maybe working or something. And we have delivered a few times food to people that could not, uh, get to the contact center. And, um, did, uh, provide transportation to one person to get to the motel. One of our rep PEs retired, Donna Matson, and, uh, so our other PEs absorbed her, uh, PE duties, and, uh, with that, we have a waiting list of, uh, requests for PEs because there seems to be a need, and so we. And so we started a waiting list. And if a need gets great enough, we'll look at maybe hiring part-time PE to take on. And that's all I have.
How are you doing?
I'm doing all right.
Good.
Yeah.
You've been with us six months?
October, yeah.
Yeah, about six months, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really nice report.
Thank you.
I like the format.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, it helps, I think it helps folks to understand more what you do.
Right, yeah. Okay.
All right. Any other questions before motion?
I'd move approval of the welfare quarterly report.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish to approve the welfare quarterly report. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
And item number 18, Article Five update. Mr. Kettering.
Well, last week we met and went through the remainder of the pages that we hadn't discussed and revised and approved or agreed upon at planning zoning. And there were still a couple areas that we hadn't reached 100% collaboration on. And I guess our decision was to, for, to keep the process rolling is the forward, the revised revisions that we made to the commission and then identify those areas that, and I think there's only a couple, those areas that needed some additional work on. And I had suggested to the planning zoning commission, if the county commissioners were not in concurrence with the recommendations that came up in this latest change, the Article Five, that we consider having a joint meeting so that both the planning zoning people and the county commission could discuss the situation and get it resolved and move on. So I guess my recommendation, Gary, why don't you add to that?
Yeah, I think the biggest issue is that, as you've seen, there was a lot that was discussed and changed, especially with manure management. And there wasn't, there was a couple bigger items that we didn't get consensus on is. And so I think it was felt that with all this change, there probably needed to be a joint discussion if we were gonna move forward on this or we can go through the items and decide whether we're just moving forward with the original proposal or what we're gonna do from here on out, so.
I think planning zoning took this really, really seriously. And they spent, they had lots of suggestions. There was a lot of good, solid discussion. And I'd recommend, with the exception of the one or two areas that we haven't reached consensus on, I'd recommend that at the next county commission meeting, we be prepared to vote on the entire thing in. And we need to get, to do that, we need to get these one or two items that we don't have consensus on decided. Maybe we gotta go two meetings away to vote on it, but I wanna keep the process moving.
So, Don, are you thinking you'd like a joint meeting like next week?
We could, of those that could get there, I think it's important that we move on.
And then you would look for this commission to review it again on May 4th. So I'm, I'm just looking at the next planning commission because what has to happen is it needs to have a formal hearing at a planning commission. So if we don't make the May 11th for a formal hearing at the planning commission, which requires a 10-day notice, which means it has to be noticed on May 1st at the latest, then we're into June 15th for a planning commission first hearing. Then it has to come to two county commission for hearings. So if we're looking that we want to target the May planning commission for the first hearing, then this commission needs to decide before May 1st the final form of the document. And I was, I did go through today and I listened to all but an hour of your last meeting. I had something come up and there is some good discussion and there are things in there that are being proposed that I do agree with, some of the language changes and things. There's some things in there that I think do need further discussion on what's been proposed to be changed. So if the commission feels that meeting next week and we vote on an actual final version so it can be noticed on May 1st that it's gonna be heard at the planning commission, I would support that. I will make myself available for whenever that date is. Any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, how about we meet the week of May 1st?
Because what I had said is if we are targeting a hearing at the planning commission on May 11th, we have to have a decision made before May 1st.
I mean, as important as this is, I think we just need to not rush it.
Okay, so we've been doing this since January and we had this discussion at the last meeting. And we discussed zoning changes all last year and these documents have been out there. So I do sense Don's urgency in if we don't force ourselves to a timeline, we get nothing achieved.
Well, I mean, Sherri, this is a busy time of year. I mean, this, people are getting out in the field, diskin, there's all kinds of stuff going on. And now we're getting told, well, the important meeting is next week. And, you know, I got my week booked up, I could do the first week of May. I could do that, but next week I'm not gonna be able to make it. And then, you know, for most of the days. And, you know, I didn't even realize that until tonight, so.
Plus remember to get that legal notice in for that Friday. We need it by Wednesday noon. So Tuesday night, we have drainage commission. So that would literally leave the rest of this week or Monday night.
So I understand your concern, but I think it's just pushing it a little too far.
Well, we've been doing this for.
So, okay, if we give in this time, I don't want to have the same discussion at the next meeting because we repeat this discussion every meeting. So we are going to hold ourselves to a plan. And so May 4th at our county commission meeting, maybe it's just the five commissioners, our task between now and May 4th is to watch the videos of those two meetings. You will gather all of the comments from all seven of the planning commissioners. And when we come here May 4th, we are going to have a final document. And that puts us on a June 15th planning commission meeting for a first hearing. And then that puts us well into July 6th and 20th for county commission hearings. And that's if we don't have any special meetings. So if.
Are we talking May 4th? We scheduled this for the end of all agenda items and we're.
The end of all agenda, and if we're here at one or two in the morning, it's getting done.
I'd support that. I think, you know, there is, we've been talking about it, talking about it. We've gone through the motions over and over. We've, I think we've got the information and we know there's, we knew there wasn't consensus at the planning and zoning level. And I think we've got the input we need. And I think we've had it, I'd argue we've had it, but it's up to us now.
Yep.
The five commissioners need to take our document that was submitted, sent to planning and zoning, compare that with what was added and removed, and see what we agree with and don't agree with, and try to get something between us and move on.
Don, are you good with May 4th?
I'm good with that date, but I want to reaffirm that the planning and zoning commission had strong feelings about having some mutual discussion on these items that we, that we as a commission did not agree on in the copy of Article Five that has been forwarded to us by Gary.
One thing that concerns me in the, regarding that and in the essence of time, is we keep circling around because the five of us agreed on about five topics that we said, okay, this is what we're moving forward with. And at least half of those have been changed and they weren't even supposed to be. And now, so we circle around and now there's not consensus again. And so we can keep doing this until the end of time.
Well, I think one of the, to your point, one of the main things that was discussed and changed was that three classes of manure. And it was, I would say, as I recall, it was, they just didn't think that was necessary.
And I'm open to, you know, listening to that and getting rid of that. It looks like it's narrowed down to the liquid. And that's fine with me. What I guess is probably more concerning is we had in-depth discussions on setbacks and agreed to setbacks and those look like those have changed. So here again, we also had, you know, building permits and what we want to see for right to farm and some of that. We had that discussion and that's changed. And so again, we can continue this forever. And I think we have the input from planning zoning, we know where members stand. It's time for us to review this and make our decisions and move on for the final time. Because we've already done that once.
We got a lot new, we got some new members on the planning commission now to.
And that's always gonna, we're always gonna have new members, we're always gonna have.
Sure.
Reasons why meetings need to be pushed, whether it's COVID, whether it's weather, whether it's whatever and.
I gotta agree with Don, though, a joint meeting might be appropriate so we can at least listen to what the planning commission has to say. And they might have better ideas than us on something. And, you know, I guess I, for one, you know, willing to at least listen to what they have to say. Not that anybody else isn't, but, you know, I think a joint meeting would be beneficial.
So again, I will restate that the county commissioners need to view the two meetings where this was reviewed. And every planning commissioner can be invited to May 4th and we can have a joint meeting that night if any of them care to show up and further discuss their points. But as I watched this last meeting, I clearly got where everybody stood. And because it was, it was a rather long meeting and I still have an hour of it to go and I still need to watch the first meeting. So I will go back to what I would propose is May 4th, at the end of our scheduled meeting, we have Article Five discussion and it's done at the end of that night. We will extend an invitation to the planning commissioners to be at that meeting so it will be noticed, there could be a quorum. And then the first hearing will be for June 15th at the planning commission.
My concern with that is that the planning commission will have input that night, but the public is not going to. The first time the public will be able to have input is after it's already been settled and there's a public hearing, which point it's too late to change anything. And so I really feel it's important that the county commission, the planning commission have a plan together, okay? And we're not gonna get consensus on everything, but at least it's close. Then it goes to the public for input, then hearings. Kind of, by the time it goes to the public, it's gonna be too late for them to have any influence on the outcome. And that's my concern.
How many public hearings?
We've had how many meetings?
Do we need before we can put something together so we can present it for public hearing? Because we've had numerous public hearings. They've been noticed, they've been advertised. We actually went out to the Archery Center for one of them. We've had public, for input, we've had public input at several meetings at here. Again, we can do this forever.
Until it's in the newspaper as a hearing, you know, there's a lot of people aren't gonna come in. You know, that's the time to be heard.
I think. Well, we'll put it together and get to the hearing.
Both of the planning and zoning meetings that we had where we went over the proposed change, Gary helped me on this because I'm not sure. But I don't think there was more than one person, maybe a couple people, that attended those meetings.
Correct. At the planning commission level, we haven't had public input the last few meetings.
Yeah. So, you know, so that's my concern is there hasn't been the public input that I think it needs.
Yeah, the opportunity has been there.
I'd support Joe and Sherri's position of trying to wrap it out on the 4th and get it over. We still got a ton of revisions on the competency plan and other things that we keep pushing back as we push this back.
So we have three commissioners in support of May 4th of finalizing a document that will be heard at a public hearing June 15th for the planning commission. Are you good with that, Gary?
Sure.
Great.
I'll get both of these, the original version and this out again to everybody's model and.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you, sir. All right, that's Article Five.
Sherri, the former chairperson of the planning zoning is here. I'd like to hear from her if she has sent it to add. Please.
There are still, of course, as we know, points of contention. Is that too far away? You guys can hear me?
You're good. Thank you.
The setbacks that were changed were not agreed to. I just printed off a black and white copy here, I don't have everything. The permitted special uses, as it says, there was no consensus there. I personally have a problem with that because I feel that it bypasses due process in a person that could be adversely affected to an animal feeding operation that could be coming in with absolutely no notice, no knowing that it's gonna come. I'm gonna be brief, yes.
Maybe for this, for the purpose of tonight.
Sure.
Those will be. Can we, those will be the things that we'll discuss on the 4th.
Okay.
That you're dealing with. But generally. Is this what we kind of discussed, this process that we're proposing?
Well, yeah, we talked about getting together with the, the. County commission. And basically to feel out how you feel about the things that let, we have just said that were. That were discussed as a change. But not all of them were agreed to even. At the planning level. I'm afraid I'm gonna get too close in feedback. Sorry about that.
You're good.
So. You know, I guess the, the parts that we've been. Pushing back and pushing back are of course the most hot button. Issues in the, in the, the points of the most contention among. The board members and the public. You know, so we tried to find. Areas where we agreed so that we could at least keep moving forward with the document.
And, and that was the purpose of getting together with the county commission is that, to get the thing resolved.
And you know, if you disagree with all of our changes, then you know, basically we're feeling like we kind of wasted our time. And you know, we understand that you spent a lot of time on that document as well and we're not discounting that. And I just wanted you to know that. You know, we're not discounting all of the work that you guys put into your document either. So we're just kind of going through it step by step. And that's been the process thus far. So I guess if you have any other questions. Um, and, and, and somehow this thing got completely changed and. And a lawyer got involved in saying that now they want to have a deed attached to your property again with the right to farm, but I am dead set against that. I think that attaching a, a permanent encumbrance to your property. Is just beyond the scope of what's fair and reasonable. And it's already been struck down at the Supreme Court level. And you as a board said that at the group, when you had your county commissioner meetings. That the legality of right to farm documents. Is questionable. And my concern is that it's just going to spark more litigation for the county. And create more. Animosity between residents. That's my opinion. So.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. So we will move on to item, item number 19, which is long-term housing.
Sure. Yeah, I wonder, is Mr. Fink here? He's supposed to be here tonight. Yep, come on up. So I brought this up and it's, it's came up almost every meeting again, multiple times this evening is. Reality is we're just running out of places to. Have houses. Housing is a huge problem. I mean, Sheri mentioned that we can't. You know, build on farm ground or it wasn't exactly that, but something like that. But we gotta get a plan together. So I. Ran into Mr. Fink and he is a contractor and he was gonna. Talk to us about what he's experiencing. This is a person who's out there building houses every day in Yankton County and just welcome him up and. Go ahead and you can have the floor, introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Jason Fink. I'm with K Construction. We're based out of Yankton here and we do a lot of new housing. We do a lot of remodeling. Try to keep this brief. I could go on because this is my livelihood. We do this every day. One of the things I'd like to see is, is Yankton County a little easier to develop. We have a lot of people moving into the area. What that's doing is that is driving up demand, which is then in turn driving a price. So both in the city of Yankton and in the county. I pulled up some statistics here. In January, there was 31 listings in the MLS. For the area. That's 31 houses for sale. In the 57078 zip code, there were 16 houses. A good, healthy market should have about 60 to 70. That was January. In February, the number went down to 12 in the 57078 zip code. And then in March, it went down to nine, nine available houses. And 19 in the area. So. We build in the county. We built up by the lake. There are lots available out there, but as fast as we can build them, they're selling. So. What we'd like to see is some, some planned developments, maybe some rezoning to residential. I know there's a lot of. Well, a lot of hot button topics with development and with what's going on in the county. But ultimately people are moving here and they're gonna find a way to build. We're seeing a, a huge out of state. Population moving here. We've got 12 projects we're working on right now, new housing wise. Two of them are in-state. 10 of them are from out of state. So what we're looking for is just something that's a little easier to develop, a planned area, maybe a rezoning, something that we could. Work with in the county to develop, to build on, lots to build on, to, to meet the demand. The market's demanding it. Um, that's all I've got. I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
So are you finding that, that folks who hold the land in the, in a, within a mile of Yankton, whatever, aren't willing to sell? Or they aren't willing to sell at the price developers are willing to pay?
Yeah, there's, um, it's a two-part. It's, it is tough to get ground right next to Yankton. Also the cost, there is. A big upward pressure on pricing. Lots in Yankton are very, very, very expensive. Versus the county, which actually is starting to catch up. So we're having to, we're gonna have to do something different than we're doing now if we want to do something that's affordable. One of my biggest concerns is we get this. Upwards pressure and that's gonna price a lot of the local people out of being able to buy new or upgrade. And so we need to do something that's gonna be more affordable.
Of, of the. You said the 12 or 14 of the ones that are coming in are coming in from out of state, wanting to locate here. What price rates house are, are they looking for?
The, I would say we're looking at 400,000 plus. For probably nine out of those 10.
That'd be as long as interest rates stay down.
Well, and the, you know, the recent billing prices, materials have gone up so severely. But it's not deterring. I mean, that is deterring some people, but it's not deterring everyone. And again, that's pricing a lot of people out of the market. I think in South Dakota, the National Home Builders came out with some statistics. Uh, I think in South Dakota, for every thousand dollars of median. Increase in, in your new housing, it, it prices about 200 to 300 people out of that market. Well, we just had about a 30 to $40,000 jump year over year. And that's, so that's pricing out thousands of people.
To your comment, Don, interest rates, I don't know if it's showing up in Yankton as much, but I was listening to some reports. More unlike the West Coast, but. Interest rates aren't even coming into play because people are paying 100 and 200,000 over asking price. And the banks aren't financing it because it's, it's more than the appraised values. People are just coming in with cash and. And I would think if people are moving from. California here.
It looks cheap.
It's probably not, not a big deal to come buy a half million dollar home, but.
And, and it's not, you know, we say people from California, people from Minnesota. I was at one of the city commission. Well, not the city commission, but one of the debate forums and sat next to a young couple that were in a class, a high school class below me and they're from Minneapolis. And they can do their job over Zoom or whatever. And so they moved back to their hometown. So I mean, it's, it's not necessarily fair to say they're, they're, you know. Some, somewhere else. They're from Yankton, but the opportunity exists for them to move back, just like many of us, you know, I, I served a long time in the military. Moved back to Yankton. Joe did. Sheri, she's not from here, but realized it was a good place as well as you, Don. And it's a great place to raise a family and, and. Housing is an issue. I, I spoke with Mr. Fink and I've been working with District Three as well. Obviously best case scenarios, if we could use. Some of our small town infrastructure, you know, Utica, Gayville, Mission Hill, Valen, portions of Irene, um, cause the, the system is there, but. Failing that, you know, we, we can't just say we're not gonna develop. Yankton. Okay. It's, it's gonna happen and we need to decide where that growth is gonna happen. Is it, are we gonna try to stay? South of Highway 50? Are we gonna take a portion north of Highway 50? I, I just, I don't feel our approach of. You know, what we said in Article Five, 20 acres and we're not gonna do any variances. It's just not gonna work long-term. And I, I think we just need to realize that. Um, we have a builder telling us, you know, people are, need places to stay and, and. We need to realize that and do what we can to, to help development in Yankton County.
I just, back to Joe, I, the reason why interest rates is probably. I'm guessing a large percentage of the people that you build houses for don't come in and pay. 90% of it or 50%. They look at the monthly house payment.
We're probably about half and half on that.
Yeah, they wanna know how much it costs per month. And, you know, to grow industry in here, we need to have the affordable housing and interest rates are extremely important to low.
Yep.
To, to affordable housing areas, I think.
Yeah. No, I agree.
And, and again, that's, that is one of my concerns is that affordable housing because. I did a couple of searches. I'm not sure which numbers to believe, but there are several hundred jobs available in Yankton. I've seen up to 600 jobs available. We don't have a place to put 600 people if they move to, to Yankton. Like I said, the latest number is in this 57078 zip code is nine houses for sale. And I know apartment capacities are I think one or 2% vacancies. That's, there's nowhere to move. So we, we need to build something and we need to build it affordable. So we're not pricing everybody that lives here out of something.
You know, something to, to add on to that and dealing with taxes, i- if we. Keep the number of houses, you know, artificially low with our restrictive policies, that drives up. The cost, which is also eventually gonna drive up the taxes. Because the assessed values will be higher and so the taxes are gonna go up. And, and so that's probably something we're gonna be seeing down the road if we. You know, can't figure out a problem is everybody's assessed value is gonna go up along with their taxes and we know how people don't like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Is that all you had, Don, for that?
I don't have anything else unless anybody on the board does.
Well, I think. Dan, I agree with you. We need, we need to do something and, and to do that, uh, we probably need to set some agenda items. To move it forward. Infrastructure and, and. You know, our big issues.
Yep.
So Dan, did you have a plan?
I just wanted to bring that to you. Gary, uh, Gary and I have been in talks with the city. I, I think one of the issues that. That can help address this long-term is, is a. A sanitary district out at the lake area. I think that's gonna open up a lot of possibilities. But then also, you know, I think we need to reevaluate our approach on, on rezoning. Properties and we need to designate an area in the county where we're gonna, you know, allow development to happen. Cause like we just saw tonight, the lake area is about filled up. And so where are people gonna go after that? Because it's gonna happen. We can, we can hope it doesn't happen, but we all know it's going to. So I think part of zoning is to plan for development and plan it in an area that's compatible with the county.
And interestingly enough, every time we approve a camping spot. We lose acres for building more houses and get no taxes.
Yep.
And most of, most of what's, a lot of what's going west is, has been in camping plots.
Well, that's, most of that's happening in Lakeside Commercial, which I don't think even allows res, Lakeside Commercial doesn't allow residential housing. Is that correct? So I guess I get what you're saying, but what else, what else can go there?
We're talking about rezoning ag land. We can rezon.
Well, yeah.
Lakeside land too.
And maybe that's an option too. So that's something I think we need to look at.
So are you volunteering to put a plan together for all three of these?
We're getting, been working on that. I guess I just wanna see, you know, get the, the board's opinion if you're generally supportive of that or, or not. I know. Rezonings have been pretty contentious in the past and if that's, you know. If that's how it's gonna continue to be, I, you know, I guess I don't, I don't know. How much interest we'll have, but I think it's important that we, we all get together and we designate an area that we think is appropriate for development. And we move forward with that, you know. I'm hesitant about putting a lot of work in it if there's no, if there's not buyback from the rest of the board. So I'd be willing to work with a, a couple of you guys on the board if, if you have some ideas too. This is a problem that we're having and I don't have all the answers, but if you guys got comments, I'd sure be willing to listen to them.
So are we moving forward then? Where, is that it? Any other comments on this topic? Okay. Item 19 is closed. We are now at item number 20, discussion of new package off-sale liquor licensing. My thing timed out. It's just item 20. So in your packet is a bunch of information. They passed a law this year. That amended South Dakota. Codified law 35, 4, 11 dot 1. And they added language in there that said the number that essentially changed if. I'm gonna just read the first sentence. If not previously fixed by ordinance or continuing resolution, the Board of County Commissioners shall. Before the 2nd of September in each year, determine the number of on sale and they added the words and off-sale licenses. It will approve for the ensuing calendar year and the fees to be determined. So the number of licenses issued pursuant to 35, 4, 2, 3 may not exceed two. For the first 1,000 a population may not exceed one for each additional 1,500 a population or fraction thereof. No county off-sale license may be issued for a retailer located within three miles of the exterior boundary of an incorporated municipality. So Patty has been approached already about an entity. Outside the three mile limit. That is asking. How many licenses essentially the county is gonna offer for off-sale and how much those licenses are going to be? July 1st, the law takes effect. So in your packet, you have a current list of. Licenses for liquor licenses. Currently we have nine. And I believe we are allowed eight and I believe one of these is because it's at a state park, so it's not counted. Yeah. So we're allowed eight. This new law allows us seven. If I'm correct, and we can price them between 300 and $500. Am I, anytime I say something incorrect. Okay. So like norms in those places are too close. They're within the three mile limit. So we, we can't give them county off-sale licenses. They have to be outside the three mile limit. And I'm assuming all of our small towns count because they're all incorporated. So draw a big three mile circle around Utica, Leesterville, Gayville, Valen and our portion of Irene. So I think the Mayfield Bar is, is over three miles away. So the Mayfield Bar could, could have an off-sale license of. The new place there at the junction of 81 and 46 could, so.
They have one already, Tiger Two.
So this is an introduction of the subject and we need to make a decision probably before July 1st. And is it just? And is it just a resolution or is it an ordinance that we have to pass? An ordinance? Okay, so essentially we have till the end of the year to get our poop in a pile. Okay, but just so everybody knows, people are gonna start asking about this. So we do need to probably sooner than later because I don't wanna get to November and we haven't had enough public discussions on this topic. So be thinking of this. And I would think by midsummer, we need to decide how many of those seven allowed licenses. Can we limit it to less than seven? Or is it seven? Okay. May not exceed seven.
Do, have we gotten any of, I suppose it's not in the census data because we all know we've, we've grown in the last ten years. So there's a potential we could have more than that, is there? Oh, okay. Okay. Sure. Okay.
So I, I pulled the twenty-ten census, which is the last census we've got, and it would just be the population outside the city limits. And so that was seven thousand one hundred sixty-one that live outside city limits in the county. So the first thousand, we would get two. And then the second, six thousand one hundred sixty-one, we would, that's where the five comes in. And we get, one hundred and sixty-one counts as the partial. So if that one sixty-one goes above fifteen hundred, so in my opinion, it, we'd have to add like thirteen hundred and forty people in the county in order to chunk up to one more license. So I think seven's probably gonna be our max. I don't think we're gonna be at eight.
And for some of these established operations that have been in business for a long time, they're not in risk of losing their license at all? This is just for a new?
This is for off-sale, not on-sale. We've never been allowed to do off-sale liquor before. So give it some thought. Is there any opinion right now at wanting to limit the seven? And if you had to price it today, three hundred to five hundred, what would be, be leaning toward?
Five hundred?
That would be my guess too. So how, but if I work with the state's attorney's office to get some language put together and sometime this summer, we'll do some hearings on an ordinance. Okay.
We do already have some, I've already got their names down.
Yeah.
Really? Wow. Oh, my gosh.
Making five hundred a month.
No, I think we getting a pinch on state law now and done.
Well, I think it'd be nice if we had a list of people, businesses that are interested in, in it. And, you know, so, so we know how to contact them going forward.
Okay, so the criteria has to be obviously fair. It can't just be Sherry Lowe's friends, so.
I'd say it's almost better if you don't know.
Yeah.
Do it by region or, I don't know how to do it.
So, well.
Can you go by first come, first served, Rob? Because we do have someone that's, has put their name down, that's at the top, that's.
Okay. All righty.
Well, one, one thing I'd, I'd like to keep in mind is when the COVID thing started and we, we were requesting limited access, some facilities did not participate well.
They're within the three miles, so they can't get one from us. They're excluded from that three-mile radius from Yankton, so.
Rob, does that go from the boundary of the city or the ETJ, do you know? The city?
City limits. Yep, from the ci- little circle. All right, so that's all I had. Patty had said the state contacted her, so I thought we'd better get on the ball for that. So at this point, we're at twenty-one, public comment. Come on up.
A couple of different things. Been enjoying going to the planning and zoning meetings and listening to the discussion on that. I think there's probably a lot more being heard on, over the video cams and everything else. So people are, people are probably, instead of coming, they're gonna stay home and enjoy what they can, if they can. On that topic, you know, listening to the discussion that these guys had here, I'm slightly disappointed. No, more than that, I would say. You know, there's protections for low density, there's protections for moderate density, there's protections for Lakeside Commercial, there's protections for darn near anything out there in the county except for agriculture. And that's what an ag district is. This is section five that you're working with. I'd like you to keep in mind that you're protecting agriculture. And please keep that in mind, where this is not a large residential area. This is an agricultural area. And producers out there in the ag district need to be able to do what they need to be able to do. There's areas in the state that are, have farms that are ten to fifteen thousand acres. I'd rather not see that happen to Yankton County. It probably will. But that's, if we don't keep some animal agriculture in Yankton County, I'm sure it will. The animal agriculture industry in Yankton County or anywhere gives young people a starting job. Animal agriculture is a young person's job. It's not for an old guy like me. It's a lot of work. And I just hope you keep in mind that when you go through this Article five and you try to make your changes, that you protect agriculture on all aspects of agriculture and the agriculture we have today. And the other part, I'm gonna go on, the other part is the housing that you guys were just discussing. You can't make people live where they don't wanna live. So that's up to the contractors to buy where people think they wanna live. I mean, you can say all these small towns would be great to, to beef them up, to beef them up. People don't wanna live in those small towns. I'm sorry. The realtors are buying them up and using them for rentals. It's, this, they just don't wanna go there and I don't know why. They, they'd be great for a small family, a starter home. All of the small towns would be great. But that's just not the way it is and that's not where people wanna live. And if they're gonna come build a five hundred thousand dollar house, they're gonna wanna put it where they wanna live, not necessarily where you guys think they should live. So please leave that up to the contractors. And yeah, I know the land's gonna be expensive, but go to Sioux Falls, go to the areas where people are building houses, land's expensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, public comment is closed. Commissioner updates.
Well, I think since our last meeting, Dan and I went to the Rapid City to the JD. JD AI. Meeting and it was informative. We, South Dakota met with Nebraska and Nebraska, my interpretation was it had more concerns with gangs and so were than Lincoln and Omaha than maybe what we're looking at with the proposed Boys and Girls Club and State's Attorney's Program to work with an alternative to detention. It was a good session. Had a lot of speakers. I think Dan and I talked afterwards a bit that we probably could get the best background knowledge by going to Brookings, maybe Watertown or Aberdeen or, or Mitchell and meeting with them and their programs.
I think that'd be good, yeah. I agree with what you said, Don, it was a good, good conference. And the eye-opening is how much it helped reduce detention in, in what, Sioux Falls and Rapid City? It was by, it was over fifty percent. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was a significant reduction, which leads to better outcomes for the juvenile. And, you know, for us, it, it also leads to a cost savings. So everybody wins in that situation.
Other updates? I do think the, the comment made at the beginning of the meeting by Gayville and Wallens, was it Gayville and Wallens lawyer? Is prudent. We need to be deciding at some point how we're gonna handle medical marijuana. And given the, the way that we don't like doing special meetings, I mean, I, I don't wanna get down to, we're in a pinch again and, and it's legal and we have nothing in place. So how do we wanna handle that going forward is, I guess, a challenge. And do we need a special meeting to talk about this? This is a big deal because this sets the stage for rec marijuana that's coming. Correct, yep.
I didn't listen to what he said, but that's what happens.
Yep, and there was a document that I forwarded that I got from District Three that essentially states that, I mean, in there it refers to, you gotta meet local ordinance and if you don't have local ordinance. Yeah.
I would assume as soon as it's, as soon as it's go time, if we don't have anything, they can put it one anywhere.
Yeah, well, it's not, I'm sorry, I did listen, so I apologize. But it's like they have so many days, the Department of Health, it has so many days after the first. So I mean, it's still gonna be a little while.
To write the rules.
Right. It's like November, isn't it?
I don't think it's quite that late. It was sixty or ninety days.
Yep, I, I guess my plan to make it as simple as we could, if we would authorize it as a conditional use permit in, in a commercial and Lakeside Commercial District area, areas only, boom, we're done, you know? And then those are really the appropriate areas. I don't think it should be in an ag or RT, definitely not in residential. The places that make sense to me are on our area's own commercial or Lakeside Commercial.
I think to, yeah, to Sherry's effect, we need to have a meeting to discuss that. Now is not the appropriate.
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's not on the agenda now. But again, with our challenges with amending our ordinance to begin with, it could drag out.
It probably will, it shouldn't, but it will.
Well, why don't we tell us the planning commission with the, coming up with the plan?
Well, and that's, that's if we wanna go into ordinance. We could still just do liquor license style and we've got so many and, and that's it.
I think we just need to pick where we want them and how they're permitted.
And that's.
As simple as it is.
Simple and it's standalone. So I think even how to approach it before, we can't just hand it, you know, off before we have some guidance.
The problem with the, like, doing it like a liquor license, that is immaterial to the where it's zoned at. So you probably don't want one of these things in, you know, definitely a residential area. I mean, if we look at liquor license, we have, we have liquor places out in the ag area. We have it in, you know, Lakeside Commercial. I think using zoning is a good way to, to steer it in an area where it's appropriate to go.
So I think we're try, we're getting into a shady area where we're discussing something not on the agenda at this point. So is, is this, and I don't think we should add this to May fourth because May fourth, we already have Article five, which is gonna put us here till two in the morning. So that means we're on the second meeting in May to discuss marijuana. Is that soon enough for everyone to discuss it? So I will make sure that it's on the second meeting in May, which would be the, what, the eighteenth? Yep, eighteenth, so I'm gonna put MJ down here and Article five there.
Should've had it today.
So.
Do we wanna have medical marijuana in an ag district? Do we wanna allow that?
What, and that, again, it's not on the agenda to discuss, so we, we shouldn't be getting too much in the weeds on our opinions on that. Any other commissioner updates?
Well, I've been attending the YBG and, and the Chamber merger discussions. That, that seems to be going forward. In fact, they have members voting between now and the end of this month to make that final decision. But I think that'll impact economic development and certainly touch on your housing issues, Dan.
All right. That being said, item twenty-two is completed and we are at item twenty-three. Entertain a motion to go into executive session for litigation pursuant to SDCL one twenty-five two, subpart three, and for poor relief issues pursuant to one twenty-five two, one twenty-eight thirteen, one twenty-eight thirteen, one point three. I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to enter into executive session. Further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, we are now in executive session. Microphones, please. All right, I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to come out of executive session. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the settlement offer with the Robert Nelson regarding case, civil case one nine dash three zero three, one eight dash one four three and one eight dash one four one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion by Healy, second by Kettering to settle court cases. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries.
I'd move that we give Rob Clemish authority to settle the debt, the bill with Meyer Henry Law Firm.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to give Rob Clemish the authority to settle the bill with Meyer Henry Law Firm for the discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries. And there is no action to be taken for poor relief. Entertain, oh, items for next meeting.
Are we gonna have the drainage on the next meeting that, that, okay, great.
We didn't have enough time to notice for this meeting.
Should, should we have at least a short discussion on marijuana and how we wanna do that on that day too?
I would suggest no. I would leave that for the second meeting in May. Like I said, we're gonna be here pretty late. That's my opinion now, if everybody else wants to put it on and we're here to after the bars close.
Like, I think we need at least direction on if we're gonna go with zoning ordinance or if we're gonna go. Well, I, I think we need at least direction on if we're going to go with zoning ordinance or if we're going to go with a liquor type ordinance. And then, you know, the wheels can start turning and people can bring their suggestions in. I think that's the big decision that needs to be made.
So with that said, if we do put it on the agenda, um, I believe commissioners need to show up and say, this is how I want to do it. And we have five opinions and whoever's in the majority, that's the path we take. Just to keep it short, just food for thought. So we can certainly put it on the agenda right before Article Five. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Clemish to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.